May I have your attention, please? The court reporter can start. We are on the record at this time. May I have your attention, please? I declare this hearing open at 7:07 PM. This is a public hearing for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Bureau of Air and Waste, the Metropolitan Boston Northeast Regional Office, and will be conducted in accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law 30A. Please note that this is the first hybrid public hearing that Mass DEP has conducted. We thank you for your patience, as well as we may have to work through a few technical challenges. We have interpreters here this evening who will be translating from English to Spanish and Portuguese, and from each of those languages into English. Headsets are required to facilitate with translation. You need to leave a form of identification in order to use a headset. Your ID will be returned to you when you return your headset. All headsets are available at the back of the room. We are here today at 7:07 PM on December 7, 2022, in Peabody, Massachusetts, at the Terre Gienne Senior Center to accept comments from the public addressing the proposed decision of the Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Companies, also known as M-WICs, CO2 Budget Emission Control Plan. The Department of Environmental Protection’s regulations at 310 CMR 7.70 require that any emission unit that serves as an electricity generator producing more than 25 megawatts shall be a CO2 budget unit and shall be subject to the requirements of 310 CMR 7.70. 310 CMR 7.70 (3) requires the submission of an Emission Control Plan. The scope of this hearing is to accept testimony and comments on whether the proposed decision for the M-WIC project meets the requirements of 310 CMR 7.70. My name is Edward J. Braesik. I am the air quality permit chief for the Department of Environmental Protections Metropolitan Boston Northeast Regional Office, and I will be serving as the hearing officer for this hearing. Sitting with me is Eric Worrell, Regional Director of Mass DEP’s Northeast Regional Office, and Kwantat, Environmental Engineer of my staff from the Bureau of Air and Waste. Notice of this hearing was published in the Environmental Monitor on November 23, 2022. Copies of the notice of this hearing, the proposed decision, the project fact sheet, and the project public information plan were provided via electronic mailing to local municipalities and interested parties list established during the Department of Public Utilities hearing. These documents are available at the Department of Environmental Protections Metropolitan Boston Northeast Regional Office at 205B Lowell Street in Wilmington, and appeared on the Mass DEP website at www.mass.gov/DEP. The CO2 Emission Control Plan application and Mass DEP’s proposed decision are available on the EEA ePlace Public Access Portal at https://eeauenline.eea.state.ma.us/ea-public-app/ The CO2 Emission Control Plan application, Mass DEP’s proposed decision, and the administrative record are also available for inspection at Mass DEP’s office at the above letterhead address. Comments on the proposed decision must be submitted in writing by 5:00 PM December 14, 2022. Comments may be submitted via the Public Access Portal, via electronic mail, to edward.braesik@mass.gov, or via mail. Comments provided on the proposed decision should only address issues presented in the CO2 Budget Emission Control Plan application, and whether Mass DEP’s proposed decision complies with the requirements of 310 CMR 7.70. The proposed decision contains two monitoring components. The first component addresses how M-WIC will monitor the CO2 emissions in accordance with 40 CFR Part 75. The CO2 emissions are calculated in order to determine a more precise measurement of the natural gas and ultra-low sulfur distillate, otherwise known as ULSD, fuel combustion, and creation of CO2 emissions. The Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, Regi, Trading Program Regulations, require this type of fuel-based monitoring because it is a more accurate procedure for monitoring emissions of various pollutants. The second component of the monitoring plan is the measurement of the electricity produced and released to the electric grid. The proposed decision does not address the construction or the operation of the M-WIC facility. I just want to ask, did everyone present sign the attendance sheet and have individuals identified whether or not they wish to comment or not? Once again, translators are present to aid non-English-speaking individuals. Please let us know if you need assistance. Before we begin taking comments, I just want to make clear the purpose of this hearing. Mass DEP has provided this hearing to receive comments on the proposed decision, and individuals should only address issues presented in the CO2 Budget Emission Control Plan application, and whether Mass DEP’s proposed decision complies with all of the requirements of 310 CMR 7.70. Please note that only comments on the CO2 Budget Emission Control Plan application and proposed decision will be considered in Mass DEP’s review of the submitted public Comments submitted addressing the September 30, 2020, Non-Major Comprehensive Plan Application Approval, or the Non-Major Comprehensive Plan Application are outside the scope of the CO2 Emission Control Plan application and proposed decision. If we experience any technical problems during the hearing, such as background noise, video, or audio issues, the stenographer may request a speaker to repeat themselves. I ask anyone who speaks tonight remotely to mute their audio when listening, and only unmute when it is your turn to speak. This will ensure the best audio quality for everyone. Please speak slowly and clearly, and allow the prior speaker to finish before you begin speaking. We greatly appreciate everyone’s participation tonight. We have a number of people in the audience who wish to speak, and we’re not quite sure how many people are going to be wishing to speak on Zoom, so we would like to limit the time for people to speak to five minutes. This way, everyone will get the opportunity to speak, and we wish to hear everyone’s opinion. I will now ask anyone who wishes to offer comments to come forward when called and identify themselves by name and affiliation prior to presenting their comments. Also, please submit any copies of your written comments to the panel before commenting. For those joining us remotely, please make sure your Zoom name reflects your full name. If interested in providing comments, please type your name and affiliation or town in the chat along with your email address. We will call on speakers in the order in which they have requested to speak. When called upon to speak, please state your name, affiliation, or town before beginning your comments. I will now open the hearing for comments. We will begin with state and elected officials. And our state and elected official Sally Kearns, state representative.
Thank you very much to the DEP for holding this hearing. I do applaud your efforts to make it a both virtual and in-person event and opportunity for people to be heard about the Emissions Control Plan for the proposed peak capacity Project 2015A is the name that we’ve come to know this project by. So I thank you for the opportunity to be heard, and for my neighbors here in Peabody and Danvers to be heard. To my knowledge, in the seven years that this Project 2015A was being planned, this is only the second public hearing about the plant, which is really quite remarkable. No public hearing by either M-WIC or the DEP, or any entity, has been held in the town of Danvers. And that’s really stunning because as many people in Danvers as anywhere will be affected by this plant. These are the emissions from the existing plants, along with other environmental stressors, make Danvers people just as susceptible as Peabody people to what will be emitted. So I would also like to note that the only reason that people in Danvers knew came to about the plant is because of the work of Mass Climate Action Network, Mass Action, and now Slingshot. And I think we owe them a thank you. Because without that activism, we would not have known. And to date, no one has ever sent anything to the town of Danvers to say, “We’d like to let you know about this peak-capacity power plant that we’re planning to construct almost in the middle of the Waters River.” So this is a welcome opportunity. I wasn’t planning on having to hold a mic, so... No, I got it, I got it. So unfortunately for every single person who will be breathing in the air that is going to be impacted, we don’t know the extent of the impact. We’re still hoping for an environmental impact, health impact study. But unfortunately, the DPU and state regulators have chosen not to apply the provisions of the much-heralded Climate Roadmap Law that we passed in the legislature. A remarkable piece of legislation, very carefully constructed over many, many years, and a huge achievement, and unfortunately, decided to not apply to this project. I don’t know why this is going in and out, but... So the Climate Roadmap Law will put the Commonwealth on the path to net zero emissions. Thank you. Roadmap bill, great bill, great law. And it will put us on a path in Massachusetts to lower carbon emissions, and it’s very, very unfortunate and very troubling to me and to many people that we’ve chosen, rather the DPU, has chosen not to apply the provisions. I am fervently hoping that the DEP, in its assessment of the Emissions Control Plan, will decide to do so. Physicians and our public health professionals tell us we have elevated levels or rates of asthma right here, right here in this neighborhood, over here. The new peak-capacity gas-powered generator will sit smack in the middle of a neighborhood, literally surrounded by Route 114, Route 128, Endicott Street, and the main route to Salem. And no doubt, the vehicular traffic coupled with whatever comes from these three plants, because remember, there are already two there. So that’s, I’m going to get to my request of DEP on that point in a second. But the generator will sit practically in the Waters River, within a few hundred yards of a neighborhood that was literally blown up in 2006 by human error in a paint factory. Miraculously, nobody was killed. There are plans now for a school so close to where this plant will sit that you would have to ask, would it be safe for children at that school to play outside at recess? So for sure, the legacy of 20th century and 19th century industries in this area is all around us. You can see it from the Waters River when you look over to this plant. There’s a gas pipeline running under the lovely marsh out behind Mass General Brigham, where the Endicott pear tree is located. Power lines up above, liquefied natural gas plant along the way. How much does one neighborhood have to endure? That is the question that we’ve been asking. Just how much? And so we are talking very much about an environmental justice area, and yet, we’re not going to apply the tools that we have. We’re not going to say, “Hey, we’ve got this climate law, M-WIC. You’re going to need to make some adjustments. You’re going to have to take that into account.” Somehow, the DPU said yes. The DPU, by the way, refused to let the good folks of Mass Climate Action Network participate as interveners in that proceeding, very disappointing. So my request tonight to the DEP, you’ve issued an air permit for this, is that you will hold this project now to current standards. And I’m giving hope, because it appears that you did something very similar to that in the case of the Palmer Biomass Plant. So this was last week, I know, I’m going on long, but you can’t, you have to factor in, a lot of my minutes got used up by the craziness of the beginning, so... So I’m quoting now from a news story. “The Mass Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution on Monday upheld an April 2021 DEP decision to revoke an air permit issued in 2012 for the Palmer Renewable Energy Facility. In Monday’s ruling, Stephanie Cooper, Mass DEP’s Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Planning, wrote she was certain that the agency exercised its authority and discretion in revoking the air permit, and added, quote, ‘More recent societal context and heightened focus on environmental justice are relevant to this matter,’ citing requirements under a 2021 climate law and updated executive branch, updated executive branch, environmental justice policies.” Mass DEP has changed its processes for reviewing these types of permit applications to both ensure that both people living in EJ communities have a genuine opportunity to participate in decision-making impacting their health and environment, and that the environmental burdens on these communities are considered. Any future permit applications seeking approval of the proposed facility must be evaluated with the benefit of enhanced public engagement. That is what I’m asking tonight. I think that’s what we’re all hoping. Apply the same air quality standards for this project and the ECP in this neighborhood as you would for a project in another EJ neighborhood. And in addition, I think that the department, the applicant, M-WIC, and the department should provide the public with the timeline for taking the other plants offline. I don’t want to take more time than is fair, but I will just say this, that the whole issue of cumulative emissions is very important here. And I feel strongly, and I know we all do, that you cannot look at just the Emissions Control Budget for this one plant. You have three, you’ll have three when this one is done. What is the timeline for removing other plants from operation? And how will you measure all of those emissions together? I think M-WIC tried to make the argument, if I read it correctly or understood it correctly, they were trying to make the argument that they and PMLP are different, and you can’t hold one accountable for the actions of the other. But I don’t think that’s what we’re talking about. We’re talking about cumulative emissions. I would appreciate clarification on that. I thank you very much for your careful consideration of the comments that you will hear from my neighbors and me tonight. Thank you very much.
I’d like to call Susan Smoller.
Good evening. Hey, it’s working, we’re good. Good evening, I’m Susan Smoller, and I’m a 37-year resident of Peabody, living at Three Lomen Circle, and I am co-founder of the Breathe Clean North Shore Group, a grassroots effort fighting against M-WIC’s new peaker, as well as the two existing peaker plants at the same site on Pulaski Street. We are happy to welcome you to Peabody. This is a new experience for us, since the siting process for this plant was not very transparent. Thank you to all of you for coming tonight in solidarity with your Peabody friends. We extend a particularly warm welcome to our neighbors across the river in Danvers, the only environmental justice area in Danvers, and they breathe the same air we do in Peabody’s eight environmental justice areas. We, the communities of the Waters River, share the health impacts of living with cumulative environmental pollution resulting from industrial development around the Waters River for more than a century. Danvers is not a member of M-WIC, and receives nothing but risk from this peaker plant on Pulaski Street. I want to extend another warm welcome to our neighbors from Salem and their city council, who recently issued a resolution against the new peaker plant, and our friends from Marblehead. Thank you. Sustainable Marblehead also issued statements and resolutions opposing the new peakers, so we appreciate that. I also want to give a shout-out to the elected officials who have joined us here tonight, Representative Sally Kearns, City Councilor Tom Ghul, the first time we’ve had city involvement in any way. We appreciate it, and I apologize if there’s other officials here that I have not recognized. So, questions. Why does the air monitoring plan under consideration not apply to the entire Waters River station? All three polluting peakers, instead of only the new peaker. The new plant appears to rely heavily on sharing PMLP resources, in addition to sharing the use of the city’s land. The new plant is an add-on designated to share facilities and maintenance support with PMLP, including providing the new plant with natural gas via the Waters River site connection, allowing the new plant to connect with the regional high-voltage transmission system by connecting to a PMLP substation, and sharing a new ULSD 200,000-gallon oil storage tank with both facilities. Why does the monitoring plan focus solely on CO2? How are other byproducts of the plant monitored, such as NOx and PM 2.5? Don’t the residents of the environmental justice areas surrounding the plants deserve a plan that monitors all the pollution being created by the plants, not just the one under construction? BCNS has requested several times that PMLP provide information on when the existing plants run and what they are burning, to no avail. We continue to request that information in hopes of adding it to the data from Purple Air Sensors that the Peabody Board of Health received with funding from the DEP, and to help identify how running the plants on different fuels contributes to our high rate of emergency room visits for asthma. Please require M-WIC to provide a regular report to the public on when the new plant runs and what it is burning, as well as the monitoring results. And I think that is included in what we’re here to discuss tonight, the monitoring plan, if you’re listening, is that they should be providing reports of what their plan shows us and tells us. Please also require that M-WIC publish when the new plant is tested, since testing requires the plant to run continuously for a number of hours, up to eight hours. We have requested the same of PMLP regarding the two existing plants, again, to no avail. Without a complete picture of the air quality around the plant, how can we follow the 2021 Massachusetts Climate Roadmap Lap Map and Law, and a 2021 update to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Environmental Justice Policy that mandates increasing protections for low-income communities of color? Our three plants are within a minority EJ area and largely surrounded by EJ areas. The communities along the Waters River are disproportionately impacted by pollution, as highlighted by the Massachusetts Climate Action Network’s preliminary health analysis of the areas within a 1.5-mile radius of the plants. The prevalence of disease in these areas is significantly higher compared to the rest of the state. We have higher rates of stroke, chronic kidney disease, cancer, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, and coronary heart disease. MCAN’s study highlights the need for additional analysis. It’s been seven years since the new plant was proposed. Life has changed. 2022 is not the time to be investing in a new oil and gas infrastructure, now that battery storage is a viable alternative, and there are new renewable alternatives. The number of our environmental justice areas have increased since 2015. We can only hope that you will act as the state did recently when the Massachusetts Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution, excuse me, upheld the revocation of a permit for the proposed site of a wood energy plant in Springfield. I won’t repeat what Sally said, but basically, they said that decisions should reflect recent societal context and heightened focus on environmental justice. And I believe decisions about Peabody’s peakers should reflect those same issues, recent societal context and heightened focus on environmental justice. The burden that neighboring communities are already facing is clear. Do not further exacerbate these impacts. Do not further exacerbate these impacts. The Peabody peaker project should not be permitted to move forward, especially if no community health assessment is conducted. Instead of adding to the burden of the community, we should be reducing it. The city of Peabody and the PMLP should look to retire not one, but both of the existing facilities that are currently polluting and harming affected neighborhoods.[627.16][627.16][applause] I do want to thank you for holding this hearing tonight and restoring my faith in the public meeting process. Thank you very much.[636.82][636.82][applause]
I would just like to call Julie Smith Galvin, if she wishes to speak.
I actually didn't sign up, but I will make some brief comments. I don't have anything prepared. Thank you. My name is Julie Smith Galvin. I am a town councillor in the town of Wakefield. Wakefield is one of the 14 communities that has purchased capacity from this project. I first want to thank you for being here. I echo what has already been said. Having a public process is absolutely essential in this, and it has what has been missing over the past seven years. The Wakefield Board of Health has requested a health impact, as many of the adjacent communities have. And at the hearing, a year and a half ago, we were in this room, and M-WIC made a lot of promises about shutting down other plants, about using hydrogen when it's going to become available. And I think all of those things need to be taken into consideration. But we also really need to look at what this plant is now. As was just said, we need to look at the societal context and the technological advances and the environmental justice. And the DEP, you did not consider this, despite the climate roadmap really directing them to do so. And so I implore you, on behalf of the 14 communities that are buying into this, the environmental justice areas, and all the people in all the adjacent communities, to really look at this, to look at the cumulative impacts, and to think about what this plant means to health and the environment going forward. Thank you.[746.38][746.38][applause]
We'd also like to call Stephanie Peach, if she wishes to speak.
Hi, thank you very much. Was not planning to speak. I do feel so compelled after hearing the representative speak and hearing Sudhi speak. Sudhi really is the resident of Peabody who brought this to my attention. I represent Ward 3, which is where this peaker will lie, where also the two existing peakers for PMLP exist. And I was here a year and a half ago at the first hearing that you had, and very much appreciate that that started, albeit a little late. But for the residents of Peabody, difficult. It's a tough pill to swallow. We sit in this great area where we have a municipal light plant. We benefit from great electrical rates. And we understand the position that M-WIC is in, and what enabled to be able to provide those rates. We need to produce more electricity. And I have learned more about the grid in the last year and a half than I ever thought I would in my life. But I've become an expert on electricity and the grid and construction in the past year as a city councillor of Ward 3, so I guess I have M-WIC to thank for a lot of that. I do have a couple notes I jotted down. I do want to just again thank Sudhi, thank the other activists who have really brought this to the attention of the elected officials as this -- yeah, thank you.[851.61][851.61][applause] This project was named in a way where I don't think the elected officials had really any idea what it was, or what was actually going to happen, or what they maybe agreed to, other than maybe the people on the Light Commission who understand this realm and this really niche industry that we're talking about here. But specifically, this neighborhood is an environmental justice neighborhood for reasons that date decades back. Peabody is from the leather industry, and we live in a polluted city. That is a fact, and there is no way around it. We do take strides as a city, as residents, to improve that whenever, whenever possible. And we work with our state and our federal government to do so. And it's really hard for us to then say, we're going to add something else that may pollute the very air that we breathe, and the area of the city that has already been impacted so heavily by the leather industry, because this is the oldest part of Peabody that we're talking about here. And you're actually constructing a peaker plant across the way from an old leather factory and some mill buildings that we've been able to revitalize and use in better ways and clean up a lot of that area. I understand this peaker, from the conversations that have been had at previous meetings and from conversations I've had with other experts in the field, is much cleaner than the peakers we currently run. So my big ask from the DEP is that there is a timeline to shut down the existing diesel peakers that we run in Peabody. And I know that's true of PMLP, but [applause]. I think it's important for us to know, what is that timeline? There should be a timeline. Peabody is bearing the burden for 14 other communities that are buying into this. Danvers, who doesn't even buy into this, is bearing the burden environmentally. And I understand that this peaker that is being built is strides ahead of the existing peaker as far as environmental impact, but there is still an impact. So I also ask that the community health assessment is run. That's all we've asked for at this point. Run the community health assessment. If this project was approved two years later, you would be required to run that health assessment. We didn't know about this. And now that we do, we are involved, you have -- you have a community that wants to be involved, that wants to be heard, that wants to work with you in an effort to do right by the people that live around here, but also make sure that, you know, we understand electricity needs to be produced, we understand that people live here and are impacted by it, and where can we find some common ground, and where can we meet in the middle. So I think a community health assessment is really step one. Our health department stepped up really big. They took a DEP grant that they were given, and they have run assessments on their own and will continue to, and I thank our health director for doing that. And also, just finally, I will ask that the official do continue to get communication as we move forward in this process, and if the peaker is ultimately built, as Sudhi mentioned, get updated reports when the peaker is run. Really important that the people of Peabody and -- how to do this, but -- made aware of it, and the continuous information is provided to us. We are able to provide that to the residents. And if you are just communicating with the elected officials of these towns and cities that are impacted, we are able to tell that to our constituents and make sure that at least people know what's going on. And that's really the bare minimum that we can ask for at this point. But again, to reiterate, a health assessment should be done on this project, and continuous involvement from the community, whether this is a -- is really essential.[1141.75][1141.75][applause]
I'd like to call Mark DeLea.
I'm a resident of Peabody. I've lived here for about 30 years. I'm an urban planner, been involved in climate action type of planning for some time. My wife and I, for 11 years, have had Peabody's first all-solar house.[1194.41][1194.41][applause] And when I went to the June meeting that M-WIC held, and I recall them saying how, gee, we'd like to do batteries, but batteries are just too expensive, so we're going to have to do a conventionally fossil-fueled peaker plant. I also write articles for city magazines on climate, so I've got a lot of notes kicking around. I'm also doing a website on how cities can approach climate action. So I've got all sorts of information here on my desk. So I decided, when I heard about this meeting, that I would take a look at peaker plants and what they're doing, who's using them, what's their future, what's their present. And I found a lot of -- mostly what I'm finding is how energy storage is pretty much making peaker plants, fossil-fueled peaker plants, obsolete. Now, I've sent by an email attachment to yourself, the moderator, a copy of what I put together here. It's about five pages, and I'm certainly not going to stand here and read them all. But I'd like to just put in a few highlights, one of which is that, and not too many people know it unless they dug into the contents of the Inflation Reduction Act. It was 2015 when M-WIC did its study and came out with what they're still saying is the only way to go. Things have changed hootly since then. The Inflation Reduction Act has massive billions and billions, as Carl Sagan used to say, billions and billions of dollars for all kinds of green energy projects, including energy storage, which is what we're really needing here, as opposed to a peaker plant. And it also makes the investment tax credits that were formerly only available to tax-paying organizations, private companies, they are now available through what's called direct pay, to cities, towns, municipal light plants, energy cooperatives, that sort of thing. So any argument that M-WIC had made regarding, we just can't afford batteries, that's totally out the window. That's just, doesn't calculate anymore.[1334.87][1334.87][applause] A study recently done this year by the National Renewable Energy Lab, part of the Department of Energy. It says, "Significant deployment of energy storage can successfully balance load and meet demand at all hours while helping electricity grids run more efficiently." Here's another one, from the Batteries and Hybrid Renewable Plus Storage Projects Will Be a Massive Grid Resource. The Sandia National Laboratories, I think everybody's heard of them, Energy Storage to Replace Peaker Plants. And there's a whole lot of these. Some of the options are, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, is hot sand storage. It originated in Finland about five years ago for district heating, but now it's being used for district heating and electrical generation. And it's ultra-low-key, it's super-cheap, all you need is hot sand that you heat up with either leftover cheap off-peak electricity, or you heat it up with wind or solar, preferably. So there's a lot on hot sand, and where it's being used around the country. There's a concept called virtual power plants, VPPs. This is where you sort batteries into the businesses and the homes of people who live in the grid, and they have an agreement with the utility that when power's running low, some of the energy from their batteries that they've been given or bought at a nice price go back into the grid. This is a peaker plant without a peaker plant. Another one is community microgrids. Some of you may know what microgrids are. It's forming, it's sort of like living off-grid within the grid. You can either be connected to the grid or not. It can involve renewable energy, or it can be just used with batteries. And you can mix in some of these. You can mix in different types of storage. You can mix in virtual power plants with community microgrids. That's all I really want to say, is wanted to cover the high points of that. But I do want to reemphasize that the Inflation Reduction Act really changes the numbers of all of this.[1472.22][1472.22][applause] For anybody who didn't get a copy, I was passing out copies of this to people. If anybody wants one, I've got about 50 more.[1484.12][1484.12][applause]
I'd like to call Mireel Bajani.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. My name is Miree Bajani, and I am the co-executive director of Slingshot, a regional nonprofit that works alongside communities most impacted by environmental threats to take aim at polluters and build community power. I have been supporting Breathe Clean North Shore in their campaign against this peaker plant for almost two years. In the last few years, Massachusetts has passed two significant pieces of legislation that have overhauled our state's considerations for and protections of environmental justice communities. It is a fact that had Project 2015A, or as we call it, the Peabody peaker, been proposed this year or even last year, it would have gone through a drastically different regulatory process, one that would have been more thorough, more transparent, and more cognizant of cumulative impact. It still baffles me that the state is allowing M-WIC to proceed with a project that our laws acknowledge is harmful to our most vulnerable communities, particularly when we have better alternatives. But that's not why we're here tonight, I know. Within the context of emissions monitoring, I want to return to the point of cumulative impact. This facility is being built on the same site as two existing peaking power plants, two plants that have been polluting surrounding neighborhoods for decades with serious impacts. Preliminary studies have shown that tracks around the Waters River site have significantly higher levels of pulmonary disease, cardiac issues, cancer, and other illnesses in other parts of the city and the state. This new facility cannot be considered invaluable. It will be piling on top of existing emissions and generations of environmental racism and harm. For these reasons, I ask you to require increased monitoring of the two existing facilities, in addition to the carbon dioxide emissions monitored at 2015A. Residents of Peabody and Danvers deserve to know what is being spewed into their air. As residents of Springfield have been saying for years, we breathe what you burn. Speaking of Springfield, speaking of Springfield, as other folks have brought up tonight, I want to commend the department on the revocation of the air permit for the Palmer Biomass Plant last year. That decision and the more recent upholding of the decision clearly note, as Sudhi quoted this as well, "The more recent societal context and heightened focus on environmental justice are relevant to this matter," referring to the 2021 climate law and updated policies. Stephanie Cooper from the DEP said that the Mass DEP has taken steps, quote, "to ensure both that people living in environmental justice communities have a genuine opportunity to participate in decision-making impacting their health and environment, and that the environmental burdens on these communities are considered." Tonight's hearing is a significant step toward the former adjustment, creating space for public input, and for that, we are tremendously grateful. Now, we ask that you stand by the latter statement and exercise the full extent of your power to protect Peabody, Danvers, and residents across the Commonwealth. Staying within the confines of precedent and checkboxes required by law is not enough. We are in unprecedented times, and we need you to be leaders. Please carry out --[1730.03][1730.03][applause] So I have three asks for you tonight. One, carry out a full community health impact assessment for this project.[1741.62][1741.62][applause] Two, ensure that the two existing peaker plants are closed to minimize cumulative And three, require increased monitoring of all facilities at the Waters River site. Thank you so much.[1763.03][1763.03][applause]
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Logan Malek.
Can you hear me okay? Thank you all so much for being here. My name is Logan Malek, and I am the interim executive director at the Massachusetts Climate Action Network. MCAN is a nonprofit grassroots organization with over 65 chapters across the Commonwealth. with over 65 chapters across the Commonwealth, including in Peabody, and we work to cultivate and advance climate action on the local, statewide, and regional level so that people and communities in Massachusetts can thrive in a healthy, clean, and... First, I'd like to thank the Department of Environmental Protection for agreeing to hold this hearing. Over the past seven years, residents of Peabody, neighboring communities, and the 13 other participating communities in Special Project 15A when it comes to this project, and have largely not had an opportunity to understand and to voice their concerns about the impact that it will have on their communities. While this hearing can in no way make up for what has already been done by EMWIC, PMLP, and the state agencies, we see this as a very necessary and beneficial right direction and one that we are very grateful for. So thank you for being here. As the DEP continues to deliberate on whether or not EMWIC CO2 Budget Emissions Control Plan should be considered or should be approved, MCAN encourages you to include the following considerations and to take them into account. Are the ambient emission levels discussed and outlined up-to-date? And do they accurately reflect the emissions in the surrounding area? I think we have some serious concerns that they are not up-to-date and that they do not accurately reflect what is taking place in the surrounding community. Second, and this is what has already been raised, but I will raise it again, the two existing facilities must be considered. They cannot be, they can... They collectively add up to over the capacity of this new project, and collectively, they will significantly increase greenhouse gas emissions and other harmful chemicals that residents will have to breathe and will have to go about their daily lives, going to school, going to the hospital, living in long-term care facilities with, and they will have to also suffer the repercussions of those emissions. Beyond the CO2 Emissions Control Plan, we also call on DEP and the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to take the necessary steps to inform the community. And these have been iterated, I will iterate, I will repeat them again. But we must increase the monitoring of the two existing facilities that are currently polluting the neighborhoods. We must also conduct a community health impact assessment to evaluate the health risks. Our, MCAN's assessment, which came out last month, highlights just how serious the baseline health implications are for these residents. This is a matter of life and death. For small children, for elderly and aging residents, it must be taken seriously, and it must be accounted for in the analysis. Finally, we still maintain that DEP and EEA that EEA should reopen the MEPA process and require an environmental impact report to be conducted. It's high time that we meet and acknowledge the critical benefit that the Next Generation Climate Roadmap Bill will have on our communities. We further call on the PMLP and EMWIC to recognize the injustice of building this peaker, to stop building this project, and to instead go forward with a clean alternative that would reduce emissions, combat our climate crisis, and provide other significant benefits to the surrounding community. They must further reconcile the harm that they are causing if they move forward to a community that our research shows have significantly higher prevalence for cancer, chronic kidney disease, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, coronary heart disease, and stroke. Those are not things to take lightly. And by installing this peaker, they will be further exacerbating the harms of that community. We appreciate PMLP's first steps to agreeing to close the smaller of the two peekers, as well as their initial steps to build a battery facility in the neighboring communities. They have taken steps to listen to the concerns of residents, and we are deeply appreciative. However, we know that much more is needed to right the wrong that even proposing this project has on the community. And we know that the best thing to do would be to stop the construction and use clean alternative solutions. In lieu of this, in lieu of this, we see the retirement of both of the existing facilities as a critical requirement of any reconciliation with the communities that have already been and will continue to suffer and be further harmed by this facility. So thank you so much for hearing our comments. Thank you so much for being here today. And I will go ahead and pass it on.
I'd like to call Sharon Cameron.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Cameron, and I'm the Director of Public Health for the City of Peabody. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment today on behalf of the Peabody Board of Health. I understand that the intent of today's hearing is to comment on the CO2 Budget Emissions Control Plan and that this hearing is part of DEP's Public Involvement Plan as part of its initiative to enhance transparency in environmental permitting. It is unclear whether an involvement plan was implemented prior to issuing the air quality plan approval for this project in September of 2020. At this fall's Massachusetts Health Officers Conference, I had the opportunity to hear Commissioner Suberg discuss the initiatives of Mass DEP to promote environmental justice and specifically to address the cumulative impact of environmental stressors on environmental justice populations. There are many well-documented health concerns associated with fossil-burning power plants. Emissions of sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide, and other hazardous pollutants can contribute to cancer risk, birth defects, and harm to the nervous system and brain. Emissions of particulates increase the risk of heart disease, lung cancer, COPD, and asthma. Emission contributions from power plants increase levels of ozone and drive climate change, which can make breathing more difficult, increase allergens and the risk of fungal diseases, and affect health through the disruption of critical infrastructure such as electrical, water, and sewer systems. Although Mass DEP has concluded that pollution emitted by the proposed plant will not exceed ambient air quality standards, the plant has the potential to produce an additional 12 tons per year of small particulates, 8.3 tons of carbon monoxide, 1.8 tons of ozone, 6.3 tons of nitrogen oxide, 51,000 tons per year of carbon monoxide prevalence, among others. A health assessment of the neighborhoods within two kilometers of this project, conducted by doctoral student Catherine Rogers of the BU School of Public Health, noted, "On average, census tracts in the focus area have significantly higher prevalence of cancer, chronic kidney disease, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, coronary heart disease, and stroke after you've adjusted for the prevalence of smoking, lack of health insurance, environmental justice status, and the total population." The state law, signed in March of 2021 in act creating a Next Generation Roadmap for Massachusetts Climate Policy, requires an environmental impact report for all projects that impact air quality within one mile of an environmental justice neighborhood. The City of Peabody has 41.5% of its population living in an environmental justice block. There are several EJ neighborhoods within one mile of the... ...acting four communities. The Board of Health has submitted two written requests to the DEP and to the Governor's Office requesting an environmental impact report and a comprehensive health impact assessment be conducted to evaluate this project's risks and benefits and to understand the potential impact of this project on the environmental justice neighborhoods across four communities who live in proximity. There has been no response to these requests. The Peabody Board of Health would like to, once again, request that EMWIC be required to conduct a full environmental impact report and a comprehensive health impact assessment. We believe that these reports are absolutely necessary in order for decision-makers and our residents to understand the likely impact of this project on the environment and on our vulnerable and disproportionately impacted residents. If the project does proceed, the assessment will also be necessary to understand the type of monitoring and mitigation strategies that will best protect our residents, as well as what mechanisms will be implemented to report data back to the community in a meaningful way, and what processes will be put into place to ensure that health and environmental concerns of residents will be addressed throughout the life of the project. The environmental justice policy of the State's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs calls for meaningful involvement of affected persons and communities, as well as the equitable distribution of energy and environmental benefits and burdens. We understand the benefits of the proposed plant in terms of ensuring adequate energy capacity in the region with stable and known costs. However, we believe that it is impossible to understand the potential burdens of this project, particularly on vulnerable and disproportionately impacted residents, without a full environmental impact report and comprehensive health impact assessment. Thank you for your concern for the health, safety, and well-being of our community.
I'd like to call Kate Enderlin.
First, I'd like to thank you for giving us some time to give you our ideas on what the problems are with this peaker plant. I'm a member of 350 Mass, and I wanted to tell you that, as a child, I had a very serious asthma problem. In the 1950s, there were no inhalers, so I know how scary it is when you can't breathe. I live approximately one mile from the peaker plant, and as the crow flies, that is, or as the particulate matter is in the air that we breathe. I'm from Salem, but very close to this thing. This health issue is what made me work very hard towards clean energy. I'm asking that you please require a community health assessment. I don't know how you can make an honest decision regarding a Peabody peaker plant without a health assessment to consider how the peaker will affect the people who live in this area. They should not be considered collateral damage. Thank you.
It's just difficult to read one of the names here. Is it Amanda Nash? Thank you.
Hi, sorry about my handwriting. Amanda Nash. I actually live in Northampton. I used to live in Gloucester, so this is my area. But I honestly don't really understand why we're here having this conversation. If the state and the DEP are genuinely concerned about CO2 emissions, there are other alternatives. They are readily available. Other states are using them, other countries are using them. I follow on Google the peaker plant news, and places are replacing their peaker plants with renewables and battery storage. So I don't see why we can't do that here, too. I think Massachusetts likes to think of itself as a leader, but I don't know what we're waiting for here. At some point, we have to bite the bullet and stop giving in to the fossil fuel industry and doing their bidding and start to address climate change. I feel like the state is waiting for some kind of an invitation. So if that's what you're waiting for, here it is.
I'd like to call Jim Malloy.
Hello. My name is Jim Malloy. I'm from Salem. I'm co-chair of Salem Alliance for the Environment, and I'm also a member of 350 Mass, the North Shore Group. And we support everything that has been said so far. We want these assessments done. They need to be done. If this plant had come through two years later, we would be looking at a very different scenario. It's not right, really, what is happening. We're in the middle of a crisis. This must be addressed. It's not that much we're asking for. These people are living in a polluted area that you want to add more pollution to. It's your responsibility. You're the DEP. You are approving this plant. This makes no sense in this day and age. This makes no sense for Massachusetts. This makes no sense for Peabody. Peabody is going to be left with a huge, huge boondoggle. There is no way in 10 years this plant is going to be running. The crisis will deepen. This is not in favor of Peabody residents. It's not in favor of any residents. We have got to stop this plant, and we will do our part to stop this plant. This is not the end. We will continue, and the plant, even if it keeps running, will be shut down by us eventually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it a Dr. Leona Cohen?
Can you hear me now? I'm a sister of North... I sat here last year during the peaker plant meeting, and you presented two and a half hours of information. We did not have the time to listen to anybody else. I am grateful to be here tonight at the second meeting and the many voices who have spoken about the health concerns, about emissions, about the use of fossil fuel again. The state has worked and passed laws that we have to follow, and we are encouraging you to look back at your papers and to follow the laws so that the residents of Peabody, Salem, and the surrounding communities, and especially Danbus, who didn't know about the meeting last year and are impacted by the effects of what's going to happen with the peaker plant, and as the gentleman just said, in 10 years, we're not going to have it. We don't have it now. So we are asking you to take an about-face and go back to the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
Hello.
Could you please...
My name is Mary Klug. I live in Marblehead, and I wasn't planning on speaking. And I hope this isn't a rude question, but I'd like for all of you, the three of you up there, to think about where you live. Would you move to Peabody with your children and your grandchildren? Take a look at this audience. They have children. They have children. We older people, we are not going to be here in 10, 15 years. But our children are, and our grandchildren are. And if we don’t damn well start doing something, they’re all going to be sick. And yes, I’m angry.
My name is Judith Black. I live in Marblehead, a town that’s bought into the Peker. A few days ago, ISO New England had a meeting, and the first chair under our last leadership was the keynote. And every time someone asked him a question about energy investment and human rights, energy investment and the future of the safety of our planet, he just kept saying, “That’s not in my purview. That’s not in my purview.” And when I read about the meeting tonight, CO2 emissions from the new plant, how can that be the only thing in your purview? Thank you.
Carolyn Britt from Ipswich. And I’m sorry. Closer. Okay. I am not familiar with 310 CMR and all the different references under that. But I would point out, so I don’t know what the extenuating circumstances, is it just CO2, or are there some other things buried there? But I did want to bring to your attention something that City of Boston does. With every building over 20,000 square feet, it appears to me, in reading on their website of the requirements for what they call the BERTO program, which is the Building Emission Reduction and Disclosure Ordinance, that those buildings, every building in the City of Boston more than 20,000 square feet, has more reporting requirements than this Peking Power Plant. And I would encourage you to read what’s required of those buildings in Boston and compare them with this, and then think of, is this really adequate compared to a 20,000 square foot office building? Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Could you please state your name and address or affiliation?
Yeah, Nathan Phillips. I’m from Newton, and I’m a ratepayer advocate with the Consumer Liaison Group of the ISO New England. And I wanted to, I don’t know if it’s on the public record, but I would like to put it on the public record that I’m aware that fundamentally, the process that led to the permitting of this project was deceptive. And what I’m referring to is the fact that last year, in the only public meeting for this project, the CEO of MWEC stated to the public that battery storage was not a viable option for Peking Plant. However, two weeks prior to that only public meeting for the community, MWEC, in partnership with Anbaric Corporation, had bid for a 100-megawatt lithium-ion storage project called the Westover Energy Center. So that was not mentioned in what was told to the public. So there was some duplicity going on in basically trying to play both sides. So even the MWEC was aware and is aware that battery storage is the way to go. And I just wanted to make clear and on the public record that this whole process has been a deceptive one to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? If not, we’re going to check to see if there are any commenters on Zoom. Can you please put the first one forward?
Yeah, can I be heard?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Albersen. I’m with AP. I’m one of the founding members of Green Clean Power Short, and I’m coordinator of the CleanPowerCoalition.org. And I’d like to speak to carbon dioxide, the filthy bubbles in carbonated drinks. It’s fake, or is it? I want to focus on two health issues. Are the assumptions underlying the monitoring method valid, and are aspects of scope, which other people have raised as an issue? And will the monitoring method and the emission of CO2 lead to adjusted and moral results? The plant is projected to create 50,779 tons of CO2 per year, and up to almost 99,000 pounds per hour. That is in addition to the ambient CO2 this year, even when the generator is not operating. All that CO2 goes into the atmosphere, and it will come around to the bios. The plant isn’t perfect because it does not address how much CO2 is already in our air. Although we don’t have the current measurements of ambient CO2, we can estimate in parallel to another group that also results from burning fossil fuels named PM2.5. And if in my technical judgment, PM2.5 particulates are smaller than 2.5 micrograms. In other words, very, very small, small enough to get in our lungs and blood and make us sick and kill us. And with plant, that is, the daily 24-hour level of PM2.5 in the plant in operation would be 21.3 micrograms per cubic meter of PM2.5. But today, without the plant operating, we see dangerous levels from 50 to 100 micrograms per cubic meter of PM2.5. Because PM2.5 emissions are directly linked to CO2 emissions, because they’re the result of the same burning of fossil fuels, we conclude that the current ambient levels of CO2 are also high. So that brings us to whether this is morally valid, let’s consider the morality of adding any additional CO2 to our atmosphere. When we use fossil fuels to generate power, we harm ourselves and our environment. Our health is at the mercy of fossil fuels, according to a report published by The Lancet, a journal bookist applying science to improve health. We create CO2 and PM2.5 when we burn fossil fuels like gasoline, oil, or natural gas for energy, transportation, or heating. Thus, we create significant threats to our health now as well as in the future. Far from being harmless, CO2 is a greenhouse gas that contributes to warming climate and contributes to disease and death now and in the future. We are today witness to a warming climate that already threatens health, life, and property. Climate change leads to an increased spread of infectious diseases, the risk of new diseases and epidemics, and puts increased pressure on health systems. The Lancet authors offer an alternative. A health-centered response would speak countries promptly shifting away from fossil fuels and would offer immediate health benefits. In PBD and the North Shores, we’ve started a clean air revolution. What do we want? Clean air. What do we want? Clean air, and we want it now. Thank you for your courtesy.
Can we have the next Zoom commenter, please?
I am Caprica Zimba. I’m the co-chair of Salem Alliance for the Environment, along with Jim Malloy, the other co-chair, who heard speak a few moments ago. In 2014, when, oh, and by the way, I live in Salem, near another gas Peker plant at 17 Sutnab Salem Woods. In 2014, when Governor DeWalt Patrick signed an executive order on environmental justice, Salem Alliance for the Environment was there at that meeting at the Chelsea Collaborative, a very, very stressed city that has, that the whole city is an environmental justice city. We celebrated that victory of DeWalt Patrick signing the executive order, but that executive order had no legal teeth, and we knew that. State, then there, pledged to get involved in getting legislation passed, and in 2021, 2021, the Climate Roadmap Law finally became law, and it included environmental justice. But I ask myself now, what good is that victory of bringing environmental justice, getting it in on the legal and on the books? What good is that doing us? Here we are in the midst of watching the state finalize another fossil fuel plant in environmental justice neighborhood, a neighborhood ordered by other environmental justice neighborhoods in Salem and Danvers. This process is saddening, and it certainly outrages us. Let’s not make a mockery of our new environmental justice law by letting the plant, this third Peker plant in PBD, go online. The only emissions control plan that is suitable for this third Peker plant is to not turn it on. The only emissions control plan that is suitable for this third Peker plant is to not turn it on. We want you to give us a community health assessment, and we want you to shut down those two other polluting Peker plants in PBD that are affecting communities like Salem and Danvers that have environmental justice population. There is no future in fossil fuels. There is no future in fossil fuels. Environmental justice is needed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please have the next Zoom commenter, please?
I am Dr., thank you so much, first of all, to the DEP for hearing my testimony tonight. I’m Dr. Great Almer, Chair of the Board at Great Boston Physicians for Social Responsibility, testifying in support of denial of this reckless project. GDSR is a group of nationally recognized experts in public health, cancer epidemiology, occupational medicine, and environmental health, emergency medicine, disaster preparedness, and the health effects of climate change. Why should the DEP act as they did for the Palmer Iodemask plant and reject Special Project 2015A? Because, according to Jennifer Rothschild, Hearing Officer at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, it’s critical to consider cumulative health impacts when approving new infrastructure projects. And the recent roadmap bill passed in the last Massachusetts legislative session now requires consideration of cumulative health impacts for all new construction, in part thanks to her advocacy. That would be your own colleagues’ advocacy at the DEP. So historically, thanks to the approval of exactly this sort of project, Massachusetts has failed to do this. In fact, Massachusetts, as you know, ranks number one in the country with an inadequate location of hazardous polluting facilities. We have the highest number of people living in poverty near facilities like this. We have the highest percentage of elderly and communities of color living near these facilities, which is shocking, because communities of color only make up 9% of communities in the state, yet they receive over 40% of the carcinogens. Why is that? Because our state consistently fails to take into account cumulative effects of pollution on populations living close to polluting facilities. Peker plants, like the one that you were proposing here and that you’re considering carbon dioxide emissions for, run much dirtier than base load power plants because they already operate at peak hours. So they start up and they stop a lot. That’s a health problem, because Peker power plants emit three to seven times more pollutants, like oxygen, during startup than during one hour of full operation. Nitrogen oxide, the particulate matter, ozone-based pollutants are also known to interfere, these facilities are also known to interfere, are associated, as you know, with serious health outcomes like asthma, heart attack, stroke, and cancer. Locating a polluting facility in the midst of an environmental justice community is, in effect, sentencing that community to such high levels of pollution that many who live there, children with asthma, elderly with COPD, will not be able to properly pollute. Climate change is another excellent argument, and looking at the CO2 emissions question again, the fact that the proposed Peker plant on climate change cannot be understated. At a time when we should be doing our purpose to stop the exponential increase in methane and CO2 in our atmosphere that’s leading to health crisis after health crisis, heat waves of forest fires flooding the breath, your project will add significantly to that burden. In sum, this expansion of natural gas infrastructure is being carried out in the midst of an environmental justice community already, living in the shadow of excess air, water, and soil pollution that are having miserable negative health impacts. I just saw a 71-year-old patient dying of end-stage COPD, and she lives not far from the proposed Peker plant in PBD. While it is literally difficult to connect the dots with certainty in any individual case, that’s the sort of health outcome we can expect to see more of should your project, like this proposed Peker plant, move forward. I would highlight that numerous health risks that I pointed here to tonight are only part of a comprehensive health impact assessment. An independent health impact assessment should probably consider the cumulative health effects of the respiratory carcinogens and include a quantitative analysis of the confined pollutant burden on cancer risk, non-cancer risk, and all-cause mortality using EPA risk estimates. In sum, to protect the health and safety of this environmental justice community and to start the important work in addressing climate change in the Commonwealth, which this project will very clearly worsen, I look to the DEP to exercise its leadership by denying this project. Thank you.
We have the next Zoom commenter, please. We have the next Zoom commenter, please.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, you can. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Stan Francine. I live at 2203 School Hospital in Rochester, having recently relocated from Salem. I'm on the advisory board of Salem Alliance for the Environment. And my question is, given that a new administration will be taking office next month, is it prudent for DEP to make a decision of this magnitude during the last few weeks of the outgoing administration? Is it not appropriate to postpone the decision enabling the Pika Plant project to proceed without waiting for the new administration to weigh in on next steps to the project? But if you plan to make a decision on the project before the new administration takes office, I hope you remember the unanimous feedback you'll receive tonight at closing. Thank you for this opportunity.
Can we have the next speaker, please?
Hello, just checking, can you hear me? Yes.
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Rosemary Wessel. I'm from Covington, Massachusetts. And I want to thank DEP for holding a hearing and making it a hybrid format. I'm currently director of Berkshire Environmental Action Team, located all the way on the other end of the state in Berkshire County. Very much like Peabody, the city of Pittsfield, where we're headquartered, has multiple environmental justice neighborhoods. In Pittsfield, it's DJ neighborhoods, where there are currently two Pika Plants, one that's very similar to the proposed Peabody Pika. Life expectancy is a full 12 years shorter than now on the neighborhoods. The owner of the Pika that's similar to the model proposed in Peabody has recently responded to community opposition and agreed to cease fossil fuel operations and is now converting its Massachusetts operations as well as those in other states across the eastern U.S. to grid storage and renewables. In support of the request for a comprehensive community health assessment for Peabody, and given the ability of an owner of a similar model plant out here to find a way to meet peak demand without harm, we join the request for DEP to require MWEC to help construction of the new Pika and look into alternative solutions to meet peak demand, grid storage, and environmental resources. The owner of this plant, who is converting, is happy to speak with other plant owners about how they are going to work. New fossil fuel infrastructure should not be allowed to move forward due to the climate crisis we're facing. Thank you.
Could we have the next commenter, please?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Francis T. O'Brien. I'm here to testify on behalf of the East Boston Climate Action. Our address is 252 Morrie Deck Avenue, East Boston. As the, as DEP considers the CO2 Budget Emission Control Plan, it's important to understand that you have the discretionary ability to require a community health assessment. We just completed a similar review process for the proposed sub, also substation in East Boston. And that issue was implementation of the roadmap bill and the clear purpose intended language of the roadmap bill. Aside from the question of whether you're required to do a health impact assessment, you clearly have the discretionary ability to order one as you consider your emission control plan. And in support of residents and organizations in Peabody and in the impact area, we respectfully recommend that you require a special plan. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to provide any comments? So if there is no one else, as indicated previously, desired to present comments, we are going to move forward. I would like to thank you all who participated in person and remotely. The comments brought forth of this hearing will be considered by the department before taking further action on the proposed CO2 Budget Emission Control Plan. The public comment period for this proposed project closes at 5:00 p.m. on December 14, 2022. At that time, the department will summarize and respond to the testimony and comments raised during the public review process. Copies of the response to comment document will be sent to all parties who have participated in the public review process and will be available on the department's website at www.mass.gov/DEP. Considering that there are no further comments, I hereby close this hearing at 8:46 p.m. on December 7, 2022.